All right, it's Jamie. She said she's ready as well.
And you're gonna put the flag up now?
This conference will now be recorded.
Soon as you call to order, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call to order again the Harwich Board Selectmen's meeting for December 7th, 2020. We opened the meeting at 6 o'clock and then went into the executive session in which we discussed contract negotiations with three of our town unions. Those discussions continue as negotiations continue and we'll be reporting as those negotiations come to a conclusion. We then moved from executive session to open meeting at 6:29. And we're now in an open meeting. And I'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I know, Joe, you're looking for a flag that we can show for the Pledge of Allegiance. And there it is. That's good work. So if you'll join me in Pledge of Allegiance, we'll start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. I will point out that this one of our members is on my phone, so is not able to, is not on camera. Next, we'll move to the weekly briefing, but just following the Pledge of Allegiance, I do want to have a moment of silence to honor our veterans of and all those who served for Pearl Harbor Day, December 7th. Actually, closer to where I was born. Hate to show how old I am, but we owe them a lot, as we do with all our succeeding veterans in those proceedings. So if you will, join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We can never honor them enough. Joe, I see Megan is there as well, so I'll turn it over to you, too.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quite a bit of information to cover and to be updated on regarding COVID-19. You can see in the packet, not only the updates, but the work that Megan has done that I made reference to in prior meetings about the work plan. So at this point, Mr. Chairman, I turn it directly over to our Public Health Director for her update.
Megan, floor is yours.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Since the report was written on Friday, we have gained 10 additional active cases. So at this time, we have a total of 229 cases, and 25 of those cases are currently active. Looking at the data, the majority of the cases are household contacts, which is something that Governor Baker spoke a lot about today during his press conference. We have several households that have three, four, even five positives within a household. And it can be traced back to either gatherings or sleepovers or something of that nature, that something that we shouldn't be doing at this time, but I know it's hard for kids. I know it's hard for adults to not gather with their friends and families that live outside their households. So those positive numbers have risen since last week. We are currently in the yellow on the state map. We are at a positivity rate of 3.82. If our positivity rate goes up to five, we turn to the red color, which does have implications on rolling back on the steps of Phase Three. If we're in the red three weeks in a row, we do roll back to Step One of Phase Three, which has some implications on the number of people at indoor and outdoor gatherings, as well as a few other smaller changes that would have to take place. And the way the trajectory is looking at the moment, we are looking at more positives over the last week than we did have the week before. So it's looking not so great for the numbers for us. We have an incidence rate of 17, which is the biggest, highest incidence rate we've had to date. And that means that on any given day over the last 14 days, we've had a caseload of 17 new cases each day. So that's what that incidence means. And our demographics in Harwich for positives is on the lower end of age group. We are averaging more in the 20 to 39 age group than we are in the older age group with COVID-19 right now. But we are seeing the grandparents, unfortunately, getting contracting the disease from the younger kids that have traveled, perhaps back from college or something like that. So the town of Barnstable also puts out a report. They put it out every day. So that's part of your packet this week. And the town of Barnstable has turned red. So they've had three weeks of higher than 5% positivity. So the town of Barnstable is red. There aren't any other red towns on the Cape. Many towns have gone up in their percent positivity with a higher rate than the week before. So we're sort of seeing our own Cape Cod surge beyond what we've seen in the past. And it doesn't seem to be slowing down. Unfortunately, we had more positives than we've had before. And the statewide, we had a few days of low rates, when I say low, in the 2,500 positives a day. But then we went right back up to 45, 5,000 positives in a day. So the rates are still climbing. The press conference today, Governor Baker and Secretary Sutter's announced some changes to hospitals and outpatient activities because hospitalizations have increased 44% this month. They have given an order to cease elective procedures starting on Friday. They're seeing surge capacities being met, and they've needed to open field hospitals like they had in the spring of last year. And it's really taking a toll on the healthcare workers. They've got their regular patients. And flu doesn't help this time of year, and some of those workers are also getting sick. So they're down in numbers as far as their workforce, and then the number of patients they have has increased quite a bit. So they have rolled back some of the elective procedures starting Friday. So if anyone has any doctor's appointments coming up, may want to check with your physician's office to make sure that things are going forward because that's changed. Other changes during today's press conference, the Department of Public Health has adopted CDC guidelines for quarantine. I talked about this a little last week, but it's official. Quarantining, if you are a close contact, instead of 14 days, you can be released at Day Eight if you've taken a test at Day Five and it's negative. And it comes along with different rules, meaning you can't have had any symptoms, and you still have to monitor your symptoms for the full 14 days, but you're being able to almost cut that quarantine time in half. And that's based on scientific evidence that the virus either presents itself or is less contagious after those eight days after exposure. And along with that comes changes to different things like the return to work guidance. So a lot of training manuals and different things that employers have been using for quarantine timelines will change. Same with the school. I talked to the school today, and they'll be looking into changing their isolation, not isolation, quarantine guidance to eight days as long as a test is taken at Day Five. And then Governor Baker did say that they're taking a hard look at data and seeing the trends. And he will be most likely making some changes this week. He said that he'd be having press conferences nearly daily, and during some of those, he'll be announcing some changes. He did not allude at all to what those changes are, so we'll kind of stay tuned. It seems that they're taking a look sector by sector. Instead of just doing a widespread shut down, go back to Phase Two, they may look at things that actually are causing the spread. And unfortunately, it's households that are really making the numbers surge, and it's not a whole lot we can do about what people do in their private time. And then and then, so by next week, we'll have something else to report. And if something is changing that impacts the town or the business people, the Health Department will announce it on the website and most likely do a robo-call or something like that to alert people of any changes that come up. In your packet is data from Barnstable County. And like I said, they provide daily data. This one is from Thursday of last week, and it talks a little bit about prioritizing testing sites. And we are getting three testing sites on Cape Cod, starting either next week or the week after. And these are sites that are free. You just have to be a Barnstable County resident. One will be in Falmouth, one will be in Hyannis, and one will be somewhere on the outer Cape. Cape Cod has been called a testing desert where it's hard to get a free or a COVID test that does not require a doctor's order. So those three sites will be ready to go in the next week to two weeks. And again, I'll make an announcement as to where they are and how to access them. It'll be either drive-through or walk-in. And I'm sure everyone is curious about vaccine. Vaccine is coming out, and Massachusetts is slated to get our first shipment next week on the 15th. And that vaccine is going to hospital healthcare workers first. They're prioritizing healthcare workers. And then once those are done, we will be seeing long-term care facilities being vaccinated, and then the rest of the population coming down from first responders, healthcare critical infrastructure personnel, and then the general public. Barnstable County has been talking amongst the health agents about doing a regional COVID clinic once it does become available to the public. We don't think this will be until the spring, maybe April, before we have enough to offer a clinic. Vaccine that's available now is for 18 and older, and it's not available for kids yet. So that does make a difference on where the vaccine goes. So it's very good news. They are hoping or slated to get 300,000 doses to Massachusetts by the end of December. So that should get a chunk of our healthcare workers done. It doesn't mean we can start guard at all. Unfortunately, it's not time yet. We have to wait for widespread vaccination before we can move on to Phase Four. Do you have any questions about that before I go on to the work plan?
I don't. Others? Good report, Megan.
There's a lot in that one.
There is, yes.
Okay, so going on to the town of Harwich in our organization and how we're dealing with this surge, I have been interviewing and talking to all the departments to try to figure out the best way to keep each other safe during this next possibly month, six weeks, because it's natural to gather. And even if we tell people till we're blue in the face that it's not the year to gather, it's inevitably going to happen. And we've already had two close calls last week with employees. And thankfully, we've already initiated Phase Two, so there were no close contacts or issues at work because of that. So the plan that in your packet is, and that was through four different steps. I had originally called them phases, but we have too many phases going on. So we've gone to steps. And Step One was our new normal, what we were kind of operating on since July. We were packing the buildings, open to the public by appointment. All staff was back to their as normal routine as they could get, depending on their own personal circumstances. And once we had widespread community spread, we did decide to move to Step Two, which is the hybrid model. And thankfully, we were able to deploy many laptops to at least all of the department heads, if not the majority of the staff that does office work. And this hybrid model has been in effect for about a week, and so far, so good. We've been able to maintain our productivity and rotate staff, so everyone's able to get into their office space, do the work they need, take work home or to another remote location, so no one within the office buildings have close contacts of other employees. We do obviously have some departments that are still operating at a higher functioning level than others, council on aging, the rec department, police and fire, water. And those offices aren't as remote as the others, because they do need to have more staff physically on the premises in order to make programs run. And those programs are still operating. We have not impacted any programs or services. And then, third step, we did have to enact at the Cultural Center last week. And the third step is the skeleton crew type of hybrid model, where perhaps there was a positive within a town building or that the transmission rates have really gone crazy, and we can't get a handle on where they're coming from. We would move into Step Three, which could be a one-day closure of a building, or it could be a long-term, more remote model that that really restricts buildings to maybe one person per department in the building, two if absolutely needed. Things like inspections for the building department or the Health Department, those things continue conservation. All services would still continue on that front, except possibly rolling back some recreation or cultural center, community center activities. And then finally, Step Four is the complete remote model, which would only be necessary if the governor ordered something like that. So we don't anticipate having to use this model, but at least we have it in case we do need to use it. And we are just really waiting on telephone capability to be able to go completely remote. But this would be an extreme model where the emergency operations center would have to be stood up, and all functions of government would need to continue at 100% remote model. And again, that's not something that we would necessarily do on a town-by-town basis. That would be something that the governor would order. So it wouldn't be unless there was an extreme reason to do that. So right now, we're operating in Step Two, and it's going well. I have not heard from any departments that are having trouble yet. Everybody seems to have their laptops being able to connect to their networks in the buildings that they work in. They have either printers or scanners or things like that. There are several offices that are still fully staffed, and the public is still able to access buildings by appointment. So that's the models.
Okay, multi-step model. And are you sure, do you show someone by the back door in case someone wants to call? Do they, how do they make reservations? Do they have to ahead of time, or can they stop in and call?
We have a phone list on the door, so they would have to call the department that they're looking to see. From the door, if they wanted to just come by. We don't recommend that, because sometimes the person you want to see isn't there. Perhaps someone from the department is there, but not the person you're looking to see. So calling ahead, giving a day or so notice to come in would be great. Tax office, assessor's office, those things where you're looking for a record or you're looking to pay a bill. People do bang on the door, and someone will go and open it for them.
Thank you, Megan. Time is questions?
Larry?
Yes?
Megan, in the case of a change to Harwich staff and how we're operating, or an order from the governor relating to our businesses and any change, is there a way that we can get that without getting it on a robo-call? Can we get a memo to the town administrator or directly from you, but sent just to the board? Oftentimes, I think we're called asking for information or clarification. It would be nice to have that ahead of. And a lot of times, I can't take the robo-calls.
Sure, yep. We'll send out a robo-call after we alert the Board of Health, the Board of Selectmen. Absolutely.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you, Megan. Others? Joel, it's back to you. I guess introduce Cindy here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I do that, I just want to make note, as I've said before, you know, this is comprehensive work that Megan and her team have been able to do. I think it's been very well received by the department heads, because Megan and her team took the time to meet with everybody, of course remotely, but had the one-on-one conversations. And of course, I go back to the support of the town, starting with the Board of Selectmen. You know, if you look at her document in the Step One in-person model, I think it should be a point of pride for everybody that we were able to operate in that model from July 6th through straight through the end of November. And that's significant, because a lot of our fellow communities weren't able to do it as early as we were able to do it or as comprehensively. And then just remind everybody that the commitments that the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, town meeting, and so many other agencies have made, we have, as I've mentioned before, the DocuSign program that's working very well, the Dropbox that we've been using has been working flawlessly. And then just everybody being committed to the plan. So even though we had to go from Step One to Step Two, I think it's been seamless. And as always, the effort is on maintaining functional operations as much as possible. And we've been able to achieve that.
Thank you, Jill.
Larry?
Yes, Michael.
Just one more question. One department that wasn't mentioned, Megan, that I'm often asked about is the library. The library is extremely important to people. Can you tell us what's going on at the library?
Sure, I met with Ginny. I went over and did a walkthrough at Brooks Library. Prior to this weekend, they were operating in-person and curbside on their regular schedule. I believe it was six or seven days a week. And last week, they made the decision to limit the number of minutes people can enter and stay inside the building. They had found that they're getting sometimes up to 80, 90 people within their three hours that they're open. And a lot of them linger. The library is a fun place to browse books at. But when people linger, it increases transmission probability. So Ginny and her staff made the decision to put a timer on the visits. So you're able to come in, browse around 15 minutes, and then you'd need to leave. So they do recommend that you have an idea of what you're looking for, even perhaps call or email ahead of time. And if you're not sure what you're looking for, they have an incredible staff that has knowledge of every inch of that library. So if you're really into a particular type of book, they can make recommendations and kind of assist in the timeframe you're staying inside the library. But they are still operating as they have been. They've closed their second floor, which kind of allows their staff to be spread out a little bit. But they are still operating, and they are watching the trends themselves as well. So if things change worse, then they may roll back some of those in-person options. But right now, they're still in person.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Joel, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And by way of introduction, I believe we're going to have a little bit of a, with all due respect to Megan, a little bit of a brighter conversation from our Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, given that we're in the, you know, season of festivities and all that. So Cindy, not to put any pressure on you.
Don't take that too negatively, Megan.
But I would happily turn it over to our Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Actually, for the last couple of weeks, I have had a list, and tonight I actually will go through the list, because as Joe just mentioned, we are in the holiday season. As everyone knows, this past weekend would have been traditionally our stroll, so we came up with some other things. As the stroll concept is not until Phase Four, so we are unable to do something like that. So we thought outside the box. For some, it was really out of the box. But last weekend, Friday, we started a new tradition, Seven Trees for Seven Villages. Hopefully, many of you have already seen the trees around. I got a very nice call from Link today. He was very excited to see that the transfer station has a Christmas tree. We had sponsors sponsor Seven Trees for Seven Villages. So in East Harwich, it's at the Fire Station. Harwich Center, it's at the Pilgrim Sonic Lodge. The Harwich Port One is outside of our office, and North Harwich is at the Transfer Station. Pleasant Lake is at the Cape Tech. South Harwich, Newbury Street South Salon and Spa. And West Harwich has one at Case Library. Those were all lit and strategically placed so that they don't blow down. They all survived the windstorm this weekend. And so that's just something new that we will do every year, because it's important for everyone to understand that we do have Seven Villages of Harwich. So that was one thing. Then I did, if any of you ever do partake in watching any of my live videos on Facebook, we did a ceremonial tree lighting outside of the chamber. And that was our tree lighting for this year, unfortunately, but we are trying to make it as festive as possible. We did a virtual Storytime with children Saturday night, and they loved it. Santa knew a lot about all of our children that signed up, so he made quite the hit and a special visit to us, as well as Cape Cod Five and I did a Santa in the drive-up on Saturday in the pouring rain. But also very successful. Children got to bring letters to Santa there. The businesses are seeing an upswing in their online shopping. So the shop local, shop Harwich, and even shopping online is staying strong. So that's a good thing to see. We do have a new candy store in Harwich Port. It's right next to the Nines Art Gallery and Dr. Gravity's Say It Sweetly. And if any of you have a sweet tooth, please go in. It's wonderful. And then finally, Megan and I had long conversations about this prior to me going to our board to make sure that they would humor me, as I wanted to once again continue the Festival of Trees. It's a fundraiser for the family pantry. These are trees that are donated and decorated by businesses and other entities, and then are auctioned off, and all the money raised goes to the family pantry. We have 14 trees in the chamber. I have a huge box of Purell at the door, as well as each individual gets their own pen. I have a huge box of Purell at the door, as well as each individual gets their own pen. And I only can have so many in at a time. And it's been working well. The one thing we did add that actually has done better, um, than the walking in is all the trees are on our website, but people are able to email me their bids. And, um, right, it started December 4th, it runs until December 20th. Currently, if we were to close it right now, we have currently raised for the family pantry fifty-two hundred dollars. Last year, over one weekend, we raised sixty-nine hundred. So we have until the 20th. I expect us to do quite well with this. And I just want to thank Megan for letting me do this. Guiding me through it so that we could do it and, um, all the businesses that did. Um, there are a variety of these books at the chamber as well as various businesses, but as I said, everything's on the Harwich Chamber website under Festival of Trees. The current bids are updated every day so that people can then continue to email me or call and, uh, place their bids. The highest one right now is our own Harwich Fire. We have a bid of a thousand dollars for the Harwich Fire tree. So those, yes, Joe, are my bright moments for tonight.
Thank you, Cindy. Any questions or comments for Cindy? I see so much going on. Uh, Joe, we'll move next to the agenda is the, uh, public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first, uh, you'll see in the packet, the information that we've received uh, from, uh, Renee Goldstein, who is the, uh, Community Relations and Economic Development, uh, liaison to Cape Cod towns and, uh, is certainly connected to Harwich. Um, and I know I'm going to try and hold it up, but I know that the town received, uh, one of these notices from Eversource, so wanted to take this opportunity to make the public aware of the, uh, project that Eversource, uh, is kicking off in and around Harwich this week. Uh, and they expect it to continue through, um, December 23rd. However, the project that they're doing requires the use of a helicopter. And the helicopter is expected to be impacting upon, uh, the property at the treasure chest. They're using a helicopter to do work on the high tension wires. Uh, it's my understanding that they're going from the outer Cape, uh, all the way through Cape Cod. They've already been uh, down Waltham, that area here. They're now progressing up, uh, towards, uh, Barnstable, Yarmouth, Dennis and Harwich. But we wanted to alert the general public that they may be aware of helicopter activity. Uh, we've even, our team have worked with the, uh, Public Safety Chiefs, uh, and certainly with Lincoln DPW. And I also want to advise the board that we ensure that the, um, the vendors that are doing this have all the appropriate certificates of insurance on file with us. Uh, Link was able to secure those so that the town has all of its liability protections. But I did want to use this opportunity to bring it to light, uh, because this project is beginning and is going seven days a week between now and December 23rd. And, um, work can begin at seven AM through five PM, um, throughout the week. So just to put that out there for the general public to be aware.
Thank you, Joe. Hopefully there will not be too many people scared at seven AM.
Amen to that.
Questions regarding that item, comments? If not, we'll move to the, um, next on my agenda is the, uh, uh, annual, uh, committee presentations. Uh, I'd like to postpone the, uh, uh, the Affordable Housing Trust discussion to a later date. There's some issues that are still being, being worked out in that committee. I'd like to bring that back. On the Agricultural Commission, Joe, is there someone here to speak to, uh, speak to them?
I don't see anyone else on the call. Uh, there was a gentleman here earlier, but I don't see him on presently. So I would ask, hold up on that as well.
We'll follow up with them. I know they've, they're still very active in our farmer's market. I'm not sure if they're, they're doing a lot of other activity, uh, active projects going on, but we'll follow up on that.
Larry?
Yes, Michael.
I, I, I don't, uh, I'm not sure that we have a full quorum for the Agricultural Commission, which brings me to, if we could sooner rather than later get a, um, updated list, and I know that Danielle was working on it, maybe Patty and, uh, Anita, but if we could get an updated list of what we have for vacancies on committees, we, we could advertise. I did have a young man, actually, um, one of the halls, one of the cranberry growers, one of the sons, uh, grandsons or great-grandsons, whatever you want to say, showed some interest in being on the Agricultural Commission. I'm not sure he's filled out his application, but, um, without knowing what's available. And if we were assuming we were going to have a report tonight, I, I don't, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how that process is going. Larry, last year we had, um, pre-reports in our packet. And, and I know we have a fairly, uh, lengthy agenda tonight, but I know that to get the reports done with sixty committees, uh, especially given the times, we, we need to get on a few more of these, but I think that we're going to have several this year with no reports.
Yeah. Uh, good point. And, uh, I'm sure, Joe, we'll follow up on that and.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, moving to, uh, public, uh, hearings and presentations, we have a, uh, next on the agenda is the, uh, let's see, Richard Waysack on the, uh, on our resident, our commercial property assessment to your system. I'm sorry, Richard, I don't have the, uh, give me a second to, uh.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you could have a member, um, move to open the public hearing?
Yeah, I'm pulling out myself, but if someone had that in front of them to open the public hearing?
I move that we open the public hearing related to the, um, selecting, um, the tax rate for the town for the year.
I have the whole thing if you'd like it. Move that we open up a hearing to discuss a possible, and take a possible vote to determine whether all property will be taxed at the same rate just the year 2021 is set forth in chapter forty, section fifty-six, the last general clause.
Second.
I'll take a roll call to, uh, open the public hearing. Uh, Don?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
And I'm an I, so, uh, Richard, you want to brief us on this? And then I think you've given us a possible motion. We can address it to you at the end.
Evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Richard Waysack on behalf of the Harwich Board of Assessors, we are before you for our annual tax classification hearing, in which we.
Richard, can you, uh, speak a little closer to the microphone? I think you, you're coming a little faint.
How's this, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, sir. Uh, we're here as we are every year to, uh, request taxing all of the property in town at the same rate. Summarize, we will be requesting a factor of one. We come to you every year, we look at after we value the town. And one of the factors that we make in recommending a factor of one in taxing all of the classes of property at the same rate is the fact that the majority of our community is residential property. Over ninety-two percent of the property in Harwich is residential property. The remainder is commercial, industrial or personal property. If we were to recommend any type of shift in the classification, it would have a great impact on the commercial, industrial and personal property tax rates of this town. And is where, we do not have a certified tax rate as of yet. It is before the state at this time, but we have an estimated tax rate of eight dollars and sixty cents, a reduction of thirteen cents over last year. If you remember last year's tax hearing, for the first time in my tenure as a member of the Board of Assessors.
Excuse me, uh, Richard, let me interrupt you. Can I ask everyone, uh, to mute their phone except for, uh, Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last year, as I was saying, although the value of the town was increased for the first time in my tenure, the actual tax rate increased at the same time. And that was not due to anything that was happening here, but by what was happening at town meeting. It was the spending of the community that caused that tax rate to increase. We are seeing this year a thirteen cent reduction in the tax rate with an increase of the community. Uh, we're seeing a value increase this year, um, by three point seven six percent. And those are values that will, we're not including this year's numbers, they're last year's numbers. We will see an in, a further increase next year. We know right now that the real estate market has just been exploding. Bottom line for us is we will be recommending to you as a board, and it is strictly our recommendation for you as a board to vote, that we tax all classification of property in the town of Harwich at the same rate. Uh, happy to, I've provided some information and some examples of what would happen if we did do a residential exemption, if we shifted that, what it would do to the other tax rates in the community for the commercial, industrial and the personal property. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any of your questions or any questions of those in the community.
Are there any questions for Richard regarding the classification?
Larry, you'd have to open up to the public if it's a hearing.
Well, I'll ask the public if there's any comments.
Would that, would that, Larry, we close the public hearing and, and go to board conversation?
Second.
I'll take a roll before I take the, uh, roll call vote. I see Donna on the, uh, line as well. Donna, do you wish to make a comment as well?
Donna, you're on mute.
I think Richard did a, a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. We have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. I'll take a roll call, Don.
Hi.
Ed? Uh, yeah, Ed, you're probably muted.
Hi.
Steve?
Also muted.
Also muted. Uh, Michael?
Hi.
And I'm an I, so we'll, we'll move ahead on that. Uh, discussions from the board?
Oh, Larry?
Don?
That's for the sake of, uh, the public to hear this. Richard, uh, if memory serves, we've never done the, the two-tiered. Is that correct?
Yeah.
That is correct. In my fifteen years on the board, Mr. Howell, we have never done any other than a factor of one, classifying all the property at the same rate.
You have a motion that you have prepared?
I do.
Uh, there is one in your packet if you wish to, uh, read it.
Larry, I have that to read, but I do have a comment.
Okay, Michael, go ahead.
I think it's important to note that the tax rate is going down, but people's tax bills are going up. Uh, and if I'm reading your information correctly, Richard, that is true, correct?
Correct, Mr. McGaskell. And I want to make the point that there's nothing that happens at the department level of the Board of, of the Assessors. It is strictly coming from what is authorized at town meeting and what the town is spending and what is authorized to be spent at town meeting.
And, and I think that that's important, Richard, and I think that however we as a board, you as a, uh, board can get that information to the public, which, you know, the, the paper will pick it up tonight, but the, uh, and as you mentioned, this year in real estate's been quite a crazy year, which is going to drive the, uh, evaluations up again. Um, people's tax bills continue to climb. And, and we hear it often that the, the, that we need to stop spending money. We as a board, and, and, and I think a lot of it sometimes is from people that don't attend town meeting. So for me, the message is you have to attend town meeting and you have to vote no if you don't believe in the project. Uh, but we are not raising your taxes. We are, your valuations are going up. We've actually, the tax rate went down. We don't have a lot of control over the valuations, correct, Richard?
That is correct. That is set by the state. We have an outside vendor that we outsource the valuation of the town. It's based on the real estate market values. And I, I need to bring to your attention and to the general public that for those who are having difficulty with their taxes, that this year's town meeting passed two articles that will impact our taxpayers. One is that we enabled, uh, the town to go to our state legislature to allow for a hardship exemption for those who are having difficulty paying their taxes for those taxpayers under the age of sixty. Now, that will not be in effect this year. It has to pass the House and be signed by the governor. That's probably two years before we see any benefit from that. However, one of the motions that was passed this year was a motion to decrease the simple interest rate for those of our seniors who wish to defer their taxes. If they are so qualified, they have a right to defer their taxes and they pay a simple five percent interest. And when the property is sold or when they decide to pay, they can pay those taxes in full at that time. But for many of our taxpayers, it's a great option if they so qualify. We encourage those who make application for one of our many exemptions to look at the deferral program as a way, and the town will get its money back. Again, simple interest of five percent. So the town will get their money eventually, but it will bring relief to those in need at the time.
Richard?
Yes, sir.
What was the reduction from?
It was from eight dollars and seventy-three cents down to eight sixty. And again, I, I just want to prepare you that this is a, a, um, an estimated rate. It needs to be certified by the town. So within a couple of weeks, we will come back to you, should you make this classification this evening to certify that vote after our tax rate has been certified by the state.
And the reduction in the interest rate was from what to what?
Eight percent to five percent for the deferral program.
Substantial's drop.
Correct.
Uh, Richard, where do the, uh, where do people find out the criteria to, uh, qualify for reduced interest rate?
They can go on to the, the Assessor's website and see it, but there's any question at any time. And frankly, Mr. Chairman, some of the exemptions and the credits that are available are complicated. And it needs really more of an explanation rather than just looking at the website. So I would encourage people to call the assessing department to speak to Donna or to Carly Jones in the office. They can walk people through. And at this point, I need to commend the staff because we, many of our senior population come in and have questions, and they walk them right through the process, many times helping them fill out the application that's needed for the board. And all of those applications are vetted. And for those who are looking for assistance, we as a board have to utilize our due diligence and making sure that each of these applications is vetted appropriately.
Thank you, Richard. Now, Michael, you said you're ready for a motion?
Yep. All right. Uh, okay, I move that we, number one, select a factor of one, taxing all properties at the same rate. Two, that we do not grant an open space exemption. Three, that we do not grant a residential exemption. And four, that we do not grant a small commercial exemption.
Second.
Your second? Other discussion? Thank you, Don. Other discussion? Now I'll take a roll call. Uh, I'll start with a, an I. Uh, Michael?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Stephen?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Thank you very much, Richard. As always, very concise presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of Bruce Nightingale and Jay Kavanagh, we appreciate the opportunity to serve the community and look forward to our reappointments as members of the board. Thank you.
That, that may be easily done. But thank you. Moving next then to, uh, consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a Caleb Chase request in the amount of one thousand dollars. And B, vote to approve a Caleb Chase request in the amount of nine hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty-two cents.
Second.
Is there a second? Are there any discussions, discussions? Now I'll take a roll call. Uh, Don?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Stephen?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Uh, thank you. And, uh, we have to thank, uh, you know, the, uh, Council on Asian in the group for bringing these recommendations forward to us and vetting, vetting this. New business then is, uh, discussion, a possible vote to approve hardship reduction to liquor licensees from, uh, castaways. And, uh, Joe, I'll turn this over to you to, uh, start the discussion.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you're about to embark on the, uh, uh, annual renewal of liquor licenses for both, uh, restaurants and package stores, both for all out. for both restaurants and package stores, both for all alcohol and wines and malts. As you had discussed at previous meetings, if anybody, if any licensee was indicating a hardship, that they should indicate that and roll them to the board. And you'll see that before you get into the applications, under item A is a request for hardship reduction in fees.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Michael?
I would, I would request that we take no action on this tonight. This one is in the same form as the last one that we received. Though I sympathize with the person that wrote the letter, if the board is going to consider these, we need to meet and we need to have criteria that has to be followed. And I believe the town administrator spoke of this at the last time we discussed this. But we are going to get a lot of requests. However, these revenues were voted for our budget. So we can't take this lightly. And we did say that we would entertain individual requests when we denied the last one. But we haven't specifically come up with any criteria and what we need to ask for to prove the hardship. And again, though I sympathize, I don't think that we can vote to give exemptions on fees that we, that we've already spent the money. So I think that some careful consideration needs to be given to this. And if put in a position to have to vote this one tonight, I have to vote no. But I think it's incumbent upon the board to come up with some real criteria for people to demonstrate the hardship other than COVID-19. And I think across the board, the town, private residents that don't own businesses, people are having a hard time. And I do sympathize, but we don't have a process to approve this.
Thank you, Michael. Is there any objections to following Michael's suggestion and holding on this for now?
I agree.
Larry?
Yes, Ed?
I agree, but I think, that being said, we ought to take some action to create that criteria. And I was wondering if potentially two of our members could get together and come up with something.
Do I, does anyone wish to volunteer?
I, I would be happy to so long as the town administrator is involved in said meeting because I think it could start with two board members. But I think implications and who they're going to provide this hardship letter to with supporting documents is not going to be reviewed by the board of selection. It's going to be reviewed by administration most likely, or at least I would think so.
I agree. I think, Joel, would you be agreeable to leading this subgroup?
I would be happy to be involved so long as Joe is involved.
I have a question, Joel. Joel, are you okay at leading this group?
Yeah, no objection. I believe there's a member that was looking to speak before I spoke, though.
As would I.
As would I. So we have Ed, Michael, and Joe will, will go that route then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We'll take care of that. Do I have consensus that I'll be able to reach out to that particular applicant and let them know the next steps?
Sure.
So that they're aware that it may still come before. So then, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the next items you have under item B first would be the vote to renew the eight liquor licenses that you see there. These are the Section 15 or package stores. These are all annual package stores with a smattering of, excuse me, they're all annual package store licenses. And there's combination of wines and malts and some with all alcohol. How would you like to proceed on the list?
Larry?
I was there to, Michael, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make a motion on this. I would like to point out on Pizza Shark, and I could do it under condom, but I think we probably should do it now. With Pizza Shark license, a licensed letter states off premises package store. Could someone explain to me what off premises means? Because I believe it would just be a, I don't think we're licensing something off premise.
Yeah. Yeah, Joe, excuse me, Joe. Steve, unfortunately, you're, you're leaking through on your phone.
I'm what?
You have background noise coming through on your phone. You might have to mute that and then come back in when you, when you join us.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Joe, go ahead. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So what you, what you'll see there, if you remember, Pizza Shark Partners doing business as Pizza Shark is a newer license. So the material that you have corresponds with their original application. And off premises is another way of saying Section 15 or package store. So technically, the eight applications you have in front of you are all for consumption off premises, which means package store, not a restaurant.
Okay, so with that, so with that, they're not serving on premises. They're doing to-go food and they're taking their alcohol.
Correct. To be consumed later, to be consumed elsewhere, yep.
All right, if, if no other board member has a comment, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I actually do. Is that a wrinkle on COVID then that allows them to convert their pouring into package, Joe?
No, I don't believe that's what's occurring here.
Because none of these restaurants are allowed, if you've got a pouring license to sell stuff for all. Michael's got a point. I mean, off premises package goods is, you're not allowed to drink on premises. You need to have one or the other. I thought that this was a wrinkle that was presented to us because of COVID.
No, I believe in this. If you're talking about item number seven, that particular establishment, while they operate a pizza place, they are licensed to sell all alcohol as a package store.
So is that clear? So they, so you can, they have two licenses then, one to sell, one to serve?
They also don't have any provision for you eating what you buy on site. I mean, it's, you know, it's like going to the deli counter at a grocery store and getting someplace. I mean, I guess you could sit on the floor if needed. But basically, the intent is you take the sandwich with you.
Right, yeah. And as long as that is correct and they're taking the food to go, I'm fine with the name of it.
You're fine. Donna, are you, is that clear for you as well?
I'm still confused, but go ahead.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the, the members may recall that at that establishment, there was a general store that was also licensed as a package store. My understanding is that was the license that was available so that the establishment known as Pizza Shark is selling all alcohol as a package store, not as a restaurant.
I'm not focused on the one request.
Go ahead, Donna.
I'm just looking through the licenses and I'm trying to figure out.
All, in, in this group, all the other licenses are, are package stores. And there were no special provisions made for them for COVID. The only special provisions were, is if you were, you know, a restaurant, a cafe, you were able to, you know, sell your to-go food and also sell bottled wine or whatever to go. And then eventually they said you could sell drinks to go. But I don't, but that's only if you were a restaurant or a bit of, bit of.
I'm sorry, what I printed out was originally supposed to be eight and a half by 14. So it chopped off those ones that you're talking about. I'm scrolling through it now on the computer. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, with that, I will make, with that, I make a motion to approve MGL Chapter 138, Section 15, annual package store liquor license renewals, one through eight, as presented in the packet.
Okay.
Your second? Any discussion? Is any public discussion? If now I'll take a roll call. Ed?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
And I'm an I.
Larry, I'm prepared to make a motion on the next group.
Please, go ahead.
Prior to making that motion, I'd like to make a, I'd like to have an ask of the town administrator, two asks actually. Are there any businesses listed in this packet that have open liquor license, liquor license violations, COVID violations, or entertainment licenses? That's question one. Question two is, does this board have the authority to not renew an annual liquor license if anyone? And that includes others coming up? If they do have open violations and hearings scheduled? Or not scheduled?
Yeah. I'll strike it towards you, Joel. There are two questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I heard the question correctly, there is an establishment that is listed for renewal of their annual wines and malts. And I would just want to slightly correct the, the statement that has alleged violations that are pending hearing that have not been finally adjudicated. And that would be relative to establishment number five. If the board acting as the local licensing authority were looking to take action against the renewal, I would urge the board to, to put that one aside and have a discussion on potential hearing as to why the license should or should not be renewed. But if I heard the question correctly, I believe of the 15, there's only one presently that falls under the categories as the question was asked.
Yeah, my question, I think Michael had, and we have the authority to do so.
If I could expand my comment, first, first and foremost, Joe, thank you for correcting me. Definitely alleged. And, and second, it really becomes, I think that this is an important decision. And maybe not tonight, but it's certainly something that the board needs to think about. We have had some long lingering alleged violations on the three things that I, I mentioned. And the public is looking for us to act. And I know that COVID has made some challenges. But in several instances, people have, you know, had their hearings, taken their punishments, and in others, they have not. And, and this board at some point have to act. And if we can't act because businesses, and I'm not saying that anyone on the list tonight, but if businesses are not cooperating with hearings or extending hearings, at some point, when are we going to make an action? And if this is the only action we can take, then why aren't we taking it?
So, other discussion?
I'm going to make my motion anyway, and this conversation really isn't on agenda. But I do believe.
Michael, let me ask you, before you make your motion, is it, I would, I'd be comfortable with holding the embers if that's when we have the alleged violation and at least for a week and bring it back and see where we are.
Can you check with council?
Pardon?
Can you check with council to see if that's a legitimate option, as Michael pointed out?
Well, we asked Joe on that, Joe.
If I may, I think it's appropriate for the local licensing authority, you have throughout the remainder of the calendar year, which is this month, to act on any and all licenses before you. So to hold off on one or two establishments tonight? Because again, the list that you have in front of you is not exclusive, I'm sorry, not inclusive of all of them. These are the license applications that were received on the 24th that we could process in time for tonight. There are a few more that were received before the deadline, but we didn't have the time to process them for the packet for tonight. So holding one or two out for any reason, I would argue, is the full purview and right of the licensing authority. And then further to the, to what I think the members coming in now is I would follow up with legal advice on what steps the board could take once you've done that. So yes, I think it's appropriate to hold one out for any reason whatsoever. It's just that we would need to establish a follow-up sooner rather than later.
If Michael would be willing to move that one from the motion, then I would, I, I'd feel uncomfortable unless we checked further.
I was gonna, I was actually gonna, thank you for the explanation, Joe. And I was going to remove that number five from the list anyway because I believe the license is wrong. So my question was a general question on all licenses that we're about to renew, just for the record. And on the ember's license, number five, it is listed as a package store on their first page.
And, and Michael, I checked with Donella on that earlier today. And that's the way it came from the state. She was going to go ahead and correct that when she resubmitted it to the state.
And that's, and that's great. I'm not willing to vote on it until it's changed.
I don't want to vote on it for other reasons, but you're okay with that specific question.
All right, so with no other comments from board members, I will make a motion or wait for comments?
There's no comments, please make a motion. Ed?
Yeah. So what you're, you're saying is the license for renewal came down from the state on ember listing it as a package store?
That's what, that's what I was, yes. Make a long story short.
So that was that we, we had at some point issued them a package store license? And I don't believe we ever had.
I don't know that. I, I, Joe, I'll let you finish it then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, this is a Scrivener's error that was created by the ABCC. They send the renewal information out directly and, you know, then send it to the, to the town. When staff was aware of it, they made contact with the ABCC. They indicated that it was an error on their end as regarding the license type, that it should have been restaurant rather than package store. But given that applicants had to submit their materials dated by the end of November, otherwise they would forfeit it and have to reapply. My understanding is that staff was told that if the board as licensing authority is looking to approve it, you could approve it as the correct type that it is because the ABCC will make the correction on their end. It's not that the town ever approved it to be an off-premise package store and we're now looking to make it a restaurant. It's a, the license type only on the application is a Scrivener's error created by the ABCC.
But what we would be asking upon would be perpetuating that. Michael's got a point here. He's like, I mean, why would we approve or renew for something that's incorrect?
If I may, you, you wouldn't be because the notice that was provided in the agenda is accurate and correct. It's understood by the applicant, the ABCC, and the town that they're actually applying for a license type of restaurant. We're not allowed to change their form unless and until the board takes action. So you would not be perpetuating that ember would become a package store. You would be doing your right as the licensing authority to take action on their annual renewal of a restaurant for wines and malts.
Joe, just, you might want to look back. Last year, this happened as well. And I'm not sure if it was the same restaurant or not. I almost think it is. So I think that this came through that way last year as well. So there's definitely an error in somebody's computer. But it happened, I remember the same conversation from last year. With that said, I will make a motion. I vote that we approve, I move that we approve MGL Chapter 138, Section 12, annual on-premise liquor license renewals, one through four and six through 15, as presented in the packet.
Okay.
Other discussion? Now I'll take a roll call. Michael?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you all. Appreciate that.
Joel, we'll move next to Conservation Trust. And I see we have a couple spokesmen for that.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it in a moment directly over to Michael Locke, the executive director of the Howard Conservation Trust. But I did want to alert the board that when Michael sent the documents over, we did send them to KP Law for review. we did send them to KP Law for review. And as would be expected, there were no issues on the materials that were being presented tonight. So at that point, Mr. Chairman, I would just turn it over to Michael.
And Michael, you'll introduce your colleague there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Town Administrator for your help on this process. Yes, with me tonight is Mark Robinson, Executive Director of the Compact of Cape Cod Conservation Trust. It's a regional nonprofit land trust service center assisting us with this conservation restriction land donation process. I serve as the Director of the Local Nonprofit Harwich Conservation Trust. We often partner with you and your other town boards on conserving these important natural areas. If I may, I'll give some background so that the audience and your board has a fuller understanding of the opportunities before us tonight. So thank you, first of all, for your time in reviewing these two land conservation opportunities, which will be made possible by your approval of both conservation restrictions. Proposed land donations and conservation restrictions are as follows. An approximately three and a half acre property in East Harwich within the Pleasant Bay Watershed, owned by Judith Miller. And an approximately 6.65 acre property located northwest of Hinckley's Pond in the Herring River Watershed. That property owned by Jacob F. Brown II. Both properties are located within, entirely within the Zone 2 Wellhead Protection Areas for the town's public drinking water supply. Both properties are adjacent to existing conservation land and therefore offer open space connectivity. Both properties offer important habitat for a variety of wildlife to feed, nest, and shelter. The town Conservation Commission has voted its support of conserving these lands. The town Water Department Superintendent also supports conserving these lands because of their location within the Zone 2 Wellhead Protection Areas for municipal wells. Both properties are within nitrogen impaired watersheds, so conserving these lands reduces sewerin needs and therefore saves taxpayer money long term. Because of the important conservation values of each property, each owner, land donor in this case, is eligible for a state conservation land tax credit of up to $75,000. The state conservation land tax credit program requires that an incorporated entity accept the land donation. The Compact of Cape Cod Conservation Trusts is incorporated and is willing to accept the land donations on behalf of the Harwich Conservation Trust, later transferring title to the Harwich Conservation Trust. The conservation restrictions will be granted to Arrenda Wildlife Land Trust. There will not be any property interest held by the town and therefore no management responsibility or associated cost. The state conservation land tax credit program requires permanent land conservation of the properties, which is achieved through the conservation restriction on each gift of land. The conservation restrictions you had before you are modeled on the state's standard language, similar to conservation restrictions you've reviewed in the past. Thank you, Mr. Powers, for having Town Council review each of the documents. So in order for the land to be permanently protected by these conservation restrictions, each one needs to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. Therefore, we seek your vote of approval this evening. And both Mark Robinson and I are here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Michael. Just for the record, I would like to point out that these are, you know, you have a lot of worthwhile goals on this. But there's, as they say, no free lunch. We do, this does take these properties off of our tax rolls. So there's in fact a donation, if you will, in terms of what we don't receive in taxes from these properties. Am I correct?
I did look up the FY21 assessed value. The assessed value of the Brown property is $346,700. Of the Miller property, $146,100. And under the current tax rate, that's about $4,302. So removing these from the tax base because of their conservation would represent a fraction of a cent of overall effect on the tax rate. So I think the, the overall conservation benefit to the community as well as savings over time relative to reduced sewerin needs is, is a net benefit.
I wouldn't necessarily argue that. I just want the town to give credit for being generous, if you will. Because it's not, there are sure things that are free, and this is, you know, you're arguing very forcefully that it's good, but it's also not free. Michael?
Yes, Michael, thank you. You alluded to one of my questions. First was on the wastewater offsets. And maybe Larry, you might be the person to answer this. But does the, because it's held in Harwich Conservation Trust, and because it won't be built on, don't we get a wastewater credit for this?
We'll get a small one. I'm not sure how many dwellings should be on there. Depends if we can count a parcel for that. I'm not sure those lots are buildable.
I, based on the road going into the one, I would say one is buildable. The other one I would have a question about, although it is, it is a traveled road out there. It's off Squanton Path. That one, I'm not sure, because there's a little, looks like, almost like a cart path that goes to it. But thank you. I think, I think, I think I'm set on that. Second question was to Joe, and that's just a request from now on. As we read through this material, the legal opinions in my mind are important. These documents are full of legalese. I'm not a lawyer, although I've picked up quite a few things from reading these 300-page packets. But I would like to have the legal opinions from the town going forward, just so I can see any commentary from Town Council on this. Larry, I'll be prepared to make a motion when the rest of the, when the rest of the board.
Are there other comments or questions? Go ahead, Mike. Joe?
I'll defer to the member first. I believe Ed had a comment.
Ed?
You know, first, this is what I guess for Michael. On the 3.5 acre parcel, the northern portion of it covers the Cape and Vineyard Eastman. Is that the power line Eastman?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, Joe?
First, if I could ask through you, Mr. Chairman, to Michael Locke and Mr. Robinson, the board has in their packet two similar documents where it indicates on page 17, there's a signature section for the full board, but then the notarization statement is just for the chair. Is the expectation that the board is going to vote tonight to authorize the chair to speak? Because it would only, as presently written, it would only be notarization of the chair's signature.
My intention would be to get the board to agree to the conservation restrictions and authorize the chair to sign. If that, if that answers your question.
And thank you. And to Michael Locke, is that, do either you or Mr. Robinson have any concerns with that? And then I have a comment for the board. Go ahead, Mark.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we need a majority of the select board to sign the document. The notarization can be actually for any one of the members. Usually it's the chair. We understand that because of COVID, not always. It's not always easy to get the chair to sign in front of a notary. Whoever is in town hall that would be available to have their signature notarized would be fine on that page.
Okay, if I may, Mr. Chairman, follow on that. I would just ask Michael Locke, as you, if this is adopted by the board or if these are adopted by the board, if you could circulate the documents for original signatures for everybody. But to the previous statement, my concern is you have a clean document right now that presently states that the board, the undersigned majority of the board vote to approve the conservation restriction. But then the notarization says that the chair specifically acknowledged the foregoing instrument to be his free act and deed on behalf of the Harwich Board of Selectmen. So I would recommend, if it's okay, it's going to be cumbersome, but if you could have the notarization, I think the two should match up. I have experience in other towns where when it goes on to the Energy and Environmental Affairs, in the past, they've had a concern about that.
We're happy to change that, that notarization block tomorrow morning, if that would help, Mr. Powers.
If the board's okay, I think that would go a long way. And then, Mr. Chairman, based on Selectman McCaskill's comment, and I take that to heart, and I apologize, meaning the legal information. I also wanted to advise the board, and I will share this publicly, that Council has also indicated that it's her recommendation that when the board votes, that you should vote to approve the conservation restriction, because the board determines that the restrictions protect the public's interest. The motion to accept should indicate that is, that the board determines that the restriction protects the public interest. You have to make that affirmative declaration as part of your motion.
Okay.
Say that one more time, Larry. I mean that, Joe.
Sure, it's that, the suggestion would be that a member move that the Board of Selectmen determines that the restriction protects the public interest. And then you could add to that if you want to have the chair or the full board to sign.
Okay. Y'all set, Larry?
I am. If you're set to do that.
Larry?
Ed?
Yeah, one question. So what, what is the notarization block going to be changed to?
If I may, I would recommend that the notarization block reference all of the members of the board, because all of the members of the board will be coming in to sign, and you're personally known to the notary, who I would expect to be Patty in the office. That would be the most expeditious. But you also wouldn't be signing until Michael Locke is able to present the first half of the document signed by his parties. Then it goes to the board, then it goes to Environmental Affairs.
Okay.
Okay, reset. Michael, you want to take a stab at this?
Yep. I move that we approve the Compact of Cape Cod Conservation Trust's approval of two conservation restrictions. Bear with me, I'm flipping back and forth. Approximately 3.52 acre parcel owned by Judith B. Miller in East Harwich, shown as Lot E3 on Assessor's Map 98. And approximately 6.65 acre parcel owned by Jacob F. Brown II in north central Harwich, shown as Lot B1-3 on a separate, on Assessor's Map 90. And that the board determines that this conservation restriction protects the public interest.
Backer. Second?
Backer.
Joe, is that enough?
Joe, is that enough? Okay.
That was excellent.
I'll take a roll call then. Don?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So we'll proceed. Mike and Mark will proceed.
Larry, if I may. Larry, one more. Michael? One more comment. I just wanted to publicly thank Judith Miller and Jacob Brown II and their families for this donation to Harwich Conservation Trust. I think that this is, that's a wonderful gift. And I would also like to thank Michael Locke for his work on this, as well as Mark Robinson. But thank you guys for protecting land that we can protect.
I would echo that as well.
Well, thank you all very much for your support. And, you know, just as a comment on, on your comment earlier, Larry, I do understand the balance that you are all shouldering on behalf of the town, balancing growth and protection of the very reasons why we all live here. So I appreciate all the work you're doing and glad we can partner again. And we'll get you that revised notary page and signature page tomorrow. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And Joe, you can add this to the list of items that we need to stop in and sign.
Once we get them from Michael, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good idea. Moving next to the compact. Joe, this, this will be going to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you'll see in my memorandum to you, just some background information. Working with our Finance Director and with the technological savvy and knowledge of Fire Department Lieutenant Scott Tillsley, I had applied for on behalf of the town for a 2021, fiscal year 2021 Commonwealth Community Compact, or the CCC, Information Technology Grant. And pleased to announce that it is awarded in the amount, the full amount that we saw, which was $67,500. As I write in the memo, we were hoping to get assistance from a grant to try to, quite frankly, change the e-permitting software that has been used in town for years, that is no longer supported by the Cape Cod Commission and is really in, falling out with many communities. There is a separate effort underway, community-wide, to see if there are other applications, whether the town looks to go, go it alone, which we can, or partner. This is a great source of funding to do that. And the impetus for this was not just because of pandemic, but really an effort to, as they, as the state wrote, to drive innovation and transformation at the local level. And as I was mentioning earlier to others, when we presented the grant material, they asked us to break out a budget. And we put in costs for project management and search and all of that. And my reading of the documents that hopefully you'll authorize the chair to sign this evening, you'll see that essentially they're looking for the town to use this, by and large, for software purchasing. And so what we may be able to do is acquire e-permitting software, workflow software, which helps us be more, not remote, but more in the cloud and less paper, and to expand upon some future capabilities, starting in community development and then going throughout the town. But very excited to get this. And the last point I'd want to make is, I believe it was the majority of this board acting in 2017, when you heeded Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito's call, the town of Harwich became a Commonwealth Community Compact member July 25, 2017. And this is the first award that the town has earned under that relationship. So that relationship is starting to pay dividends. So again, my thanks to the Finance Director and the Lieutenant for getting us to this point. And I respectfully request that you authorize the chair to sign the documents so that we can begin the process of bringing in this application, which will help our residents.
Well, first, my congratulations on you and your staff and Carol for following through on this. Other comments?
Well, I'm prepared to make a motion if you're ready, Larry.
I'm ready.
I move that we vote to authorize the chair to sign FY21 Community Compact IT Grant Award Documents, an award of $67,500.
The second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Other comments? Now I'll take a roll call. Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Appreciate that.
Contracts are next, Joe, while you're busy taking notes.
Yeah. So first, you'll see in the packet, requesting the board's vote to execute a contract with Champion Salt LLC for road salt for the Department of Public Works. The unit cost is $49.63 per ton, and the total is not to exceed the sum of $99,260. You'll see you have a memorandum from me recommending approval. You'll see that we have the checklist material, the draft contract, which I believe, I'm not sure if this one was done by DocuSign. No, this was a hard copy where the Finance Director indicates that we have the funding. No, this was a hard copy where the Finance Director indicates that we have the funding. And then, of course, you can see the procurement. The procurement was done as we do every year. The town of Plymouth is the primary, so anyone that you see on that page of Attachment A is part of a cooperative purchase. So all the work is done by the town of Plymouth. And as you'll see on the, what was returned for us, that is the best bid by several dollars per ton. And last but not least, the DPW Director indicates that while he presently has a full supply of salt necessary for right now, it is helpful to have this contract executed for that rate per ton. So I would respectfully request that the board authorize the execution of this and the board to sign.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Joe? Yes? Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
In the memo from Joe and Griffin, it talks about buying the salt for 49 bucks a ton for not to exceed a total sum of $99,260. But on the procurement checklist approval form, it says we only have an appropriate amount of 45,000.
Yeah, so that's correct. As you may recall, Mass General Laws allows a municipality to deficit fund on snow and ice removal if necessary. Again, we needed to put a cap on it to give a value that would determine the signing authority. And I don't know that we would get to the full 99,000, based on the DPW Director telling us we have ample supply right now. But that's why you see the 45,000. The DPW Director would tell us that he expects that to be sufficient. But if it's not, depending upon the winter, we could go into deficit spend and correct it at the end of the year.
Okay.
If not, entertain a motion.
Larry?
Yes, Michael.
Just quickly, the, thank you, Ed. You asked the question. I was wondering the same thing, and thank you, Joe, for the answer. What, you know, we did, as a group, vote a checklist. And I know that the word checklist is being used in here. When I made the motion and we all voted for it, I referenced a very simple checklist that Evan, and his last name escapes me, as the past Assistant Town Administrator, had made. And it took us, I think, three years to get to that point of some very bad procurement, I will say. But it was a very simple checklist that was signed by the Chief Procurement Officer that had a list of what contracts it could be, whether it be a Barnstable County bid, what documents were in the file. I found that a lot easier to read than going through this particular contract. And last week, or two weeks ago, we voted without, with the absence of the checklist. So I appreciate something in the packet. Could we agree that we could at least look at the checklist that Evan put together? And for me, it was a mechanism of having, I know we have Joe's recommendation, but it was for me, it was a mechanism of having the Chief Procurement Officer acknowledge that the file was complete. And that's why the list of things, as I presented my motion, included that particular checklist.
Yeah. I think that'd be good.
I would agree with that, Joe. If you could go back and look at that, that simple checklist, see if we could add that.
Sure. If I could just offer to the board, when I was brought in, the task that was given to me as the first half of procurement was to get away from the checklist because the department heads and others found it too cumbersome and confusing. That's what led to the effort that Griffin and I and others have worked on for several months that was presented to the board. So I have no objection going back to that checklist. But I do want to remind the board that as I did the presentation several weeks ago, this is what the board recommended. I can go back to it. I just, my concern is, I don't want us to go back to the situation that I inherited when I came on board in May of 2019, based on the prior documents that were used. But I'll do whatever the will of the board is.
If I may.
Could you bring that checklist? And I'm not clear why the department heads would object to just checking that it's been done. Why that slows down? Maybe you could give us some details of what the, their concerns were. And then to Michael's point, we could, you know, we could at least talk about that.
Larry, if I may?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And Larry, you took the words out of my mouth. If we could bring that checklist forward, and if somebody could give me a reasonable argument as to why that checklist is difficult, I would concede to what we have. But to me, it was the easiest thing to follow, and all it was, was a checklist of what was in the packet and what had been done on that procurement. And I'm not sure how that could be conceived as difficult to anybody. So if that could come back before the board, and if we all agree that it is cumbersome and we shouldn't do it, then I would concede to that.
Larry, if I might?
Don?
Yeah. It's to not belabor the issue or hammer Joe. Another way of looking at this is that other sheet was a roadmap, and it really showed us where we checked in at every juncture along the way to get to the point of the approval of the procurement officer signing off on it, and the Finance Director signing off that the funds were there. But it was, like I said, a roadmap. How did you get to this point? And it isn't that difficult. I mean, we're not asking you to replicate that in the packet and say, here it is, let me show you this, here it is, let me show you that. It was just that, did you see this? Did you do that? And if it's done in that spirit, it's not that hard. It just means that somebody's acknowledging that they're advancing this, those things having happened.
Okay. Thank you, Don.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Would you, would you please, Michael?
Yes. I moved that we, where is it? I moved that we execute a contract with Champion Salt LLC for road salt for the Department of Public Works for a unit cost of $49.63 per ton, not to exceed the total sum of $99,260.
Second.
Other discussion? I'll take a roll call, Don. I'll start with you.
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Thank you, Joe. We have one more.
The next item is a little bit more involved, as you can see under Item B. There's two different actions that are going on here. The first relates to authorization to purchase for Cranberry Valley Golf Course Maintenance Equipment from John Deere. The procurement is through state contract FAC 88. The full amount is $444,881. To accomplish that, the Finance Director sought and received leasing mechanisms and has found a five-year lease as the funding mechanism through TD Bank at an interest rate of 1.7%. Annual payments of $92,096. And I just remind the board, as you see in their cover memo that I've written, as you will recall, annual town meeting voted under Article 14 to allow leases to be for a term not to exceed the useful life of the equipment as determined by the Board of Selectmen. And it's my understanding that the useful life ties to the five-year term of the lease.
Questions for Joe? Comments?
The only comment I have is, it seems that we have an incomplete packet, and maybe I'm missing something. But on page 156 of the packet, and I believe this is from Carol Coppola, "I have reached out to obtain two necessary legal opinions. One, as an opinion of general counsel to Lisi, and the opinion of bond counsel for tax-exempt purposes. Both firms are aware of the established timeline, as I fully anticipate receiving their opinions honored before December 7." And later, the recommendation is, and I haven't found that page, I think it's page 168. If we don't have the legal opinions, in short, if we don't have the legal opinions, we should refrain from voting. The board should refrain from voting. I don't see the legal opinions. That's my question.
Can I?
All right, Carol. Thank you, Carol, for joining us.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. The legal opinions went directly to the TD Bank. Those went there today. So I can certainly provide the board with a copy of the opinions, but they were to be, so that was an old memorandum, and I don't understand why that got in your packet. Because that was before we had secured the final information with TD Bank and with both Bond Counsel and General Counsel. So I'm not sure why some of that information was placed in your packet. The information that should have been placed in your packet was, the first page of that was a memorandum dated November 25 to the interim Town Administrator, and all of the backup material that supported that. I will tell you that last Friday afternoon, we did receive updated lease documents from TD Equipment Finance with a closing date of December 11. I have those documents in my possession and ready for the board, or the chairman, to sign. Bond Counsel sent Friday evening three documents, some for the treasurer to sign, some for TD Equipment Finance to sign. And one document will require the majority of the board's signature if you choose to move forward with this.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask, was a reference made that the memorandum dated November 25 should be in the packet?
Should be in the packet.
That is the one that the Selectmen just read from, is my understanding.
No, I think that, I believe that the, the November 25 document says I have reached out to obtain two necessary legal opinions. One, an opinion of general counsel, and the opinion of bond counsel. Both firms are aware of the established timeframe, timeline, and as such, I fully anticipate receiving their opinion on it before December 7. That's on the November 25 memo.
So, Joe, the document I'm reading from is a November 18 document.
Correct.
Where it's telling us to refrain from voting on this if we haven't received the legal opinions, and Bond Counsel's opinion.
So we don't, so we need to have the
I apologize. I'm going off of the packet that's in Dropbox, ages 155 and 156.
There were two sets of those in Dropbox. It was a revision.
Look at, look at 168, Joe. 167 it starts on. To Joe Powers from Griffin Rider and Shawn Fernandez from Carol Coppola. Last paragraph.
Okay, I see page 168. If I could just draw everyone's attention to page 155. It looks like the original information is the last part. Updated information ends in the packet on page 154.
154 is a support memo.
Right, then page 155 is the November 25 memo. And page 156 has the second-to-last paragraph that I have reached out to obtain two necessary legal opinions. One is an opinion of general counsel to Lisi, AP Law, and the opinion of Bond Counsel for tax-exempt purposes, which is Locke Lord.
Is everyone saying that we should ignore the November 18?
That's what I'm hearing.
That is correct.
Ignore that, and then we're okay?
Yes, sir.
We're saying that the November 25 memo supplants the November 18.
That's correct.
I'm fine with that.
Me too.
I'm fine with it too, Larry, but I don't understand why the November, the November 25 document says I reached out to him, and the November 18 says, if you guys haven't heard back, refrain from voting. And I certainly appreciate Carol being on the line to clarify that. However, the second memo in the packet, regardless of date, basically says refrain from voting if we don't have the legal opinion in the Bond Counsel. The November 18 document, if I'm reading it correctly, says I've reached out. Didn't say I reached out and got the answer back. So me going into the meeting and making notes, I had mixed messages. But thank you, Carol, for the clarification. But I don't see in writing where it says I've reached out, is I've reached out and I got an answer.
Ken, is it okay if I address the board?
Please, Carol, yes.
So November 25, I had not received an answer yet. Friday evening, Bond Counsel was in touch with General Counsel, and they drafted a draft opinion, which was sent either over the weekend or this morning. So, so on the 25th, we did not have that yet.
Thank you, Carol. And again, I'm taking your word for it, that it was a positive, positive find. But how, as a board member, am I to know that on November 18, reading refrain from the vote, that I should vote on this tonight? And I would follow by asking, as I've asked before, can the board get copies of both of those, the correspondence in those, so that I can be assured that they said it was good, since it's not in the packet?
Larry?
Don?
To further what Michael said, any motion that we could possibly make would be predicated on those, but we don't have them. So again, I feel the same way as Michael. Yeah, I'd be willing to accept Carol's word for it. But as a routine process, if you allude to something that's necessary for us to have in order to be able to progress forward, we need to have it in writing somewhere so that we can look at it. I don't really care one way or the other about the niceties of the packet. It's more like, it's more a question of that's an underlying necessity for us to make a motion.
Yeah. I think we have two options tonight. We can, we can hold this for a week, or we can vote contingent on the illegal documents getting to us. Anyone have brothers that they'd like to move with? We can
I think with Carol's assurances, Larry, we ought to move ahead. There's no reason I said, I think with Carol's assurances, you know, I trust the finance officer here, that we should move ahead.
With the understanding that we'll get the actual documents when they should arrive?
Steve, are you comfortable making a motion to that effect, and we can make that contingent on the documents?
Sure. Let's see here. I move that we authorize the purchase of Cranberry Valley Golf Course Maintenance Equipment from John Deere, procured through the state contract FAC 88 for $444,881. Contingent upon us receiving further documentation as represented by the finance person here in the meeting tonight.
I'd like to second it, but can you change the word purchase to lease?
I might want to say, to read the second sentence too, Steve, on the annual lease payments by your motion.
Annual lease payments. I don't see it here on my thing.
You read paragraph one.
Number two, you mean?
Number two, yes.
And discussion and possible vote authorized, sorry. The five-year lease as, as funding mechanism through TD Bank at an interest rate of 1.7%, annual payments of $92,096 annually.
Second.
Second. Other discussion? I'll take a roll. Steve?
Hi.
Michael?
No.
Don?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Thank you, and Carol is, well, or Joe, you can give us that information, so we have that then.
Thanks, Carol.
You're welcome.
Moving on to Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First, you'll see that there was a, materials put in the packet. There was a need for Shawn Libby and the DPW Facilities Maintenance to acquire materials, or there is a need to require materials that relate to the community-centered generator. As you may recall, it's on the capital plan, I believe, in fiscal year '25 to replace the generator. However, in the meantime, it's necessary to purchase the equipment that was listed in the that was listed in the procurement checklist and approval form. And then attached to that was a potential for a request for transfer from the reserve fund. I just wanted to alert the board that in consultation with others, I think the appropriate step is to use the funding that's available in DPW's other property-related services rather than go the reserve fund route. First, because it's thirty thousand out of fifty thousand, we're not even through halfway through the fiscal year, and that would deplete the majority of that reserve fund transfer. But also, if we use that funding mechanism presently allowed in DPW, it would allow us to execute a contract immediately to procure the parts so we can get those parts in, which takes six to eight weeks. I did ask Sean Libby if he thought that if we purchased the parts, would we need to get rid of, or would we still have to go forward on the capital and fiscal year twenty five, and he said, not necessarily. So this purchase of thirty thousand may help relieve us down the road if the equipment proves to be satisfactory. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that. There'll be more coming on that later. Just want to let the board know that I'll be meeting with the community, excuse me, the Capital Outlay Committee. That will be this Friday, December eleventh, and I'll be presenting the draft of the fiscal year two thousand twenty two capital plan. And as you may recall, my discussions at town meeting and elsewhere, this is really just accounting for the deferrals that we held off in fiscal year twenty one to incorporate that for the fiscal year twenty two. We'll have that presentation and discussion on Friday. That's ahead of the Finance Committee Charter Required Hearing, which is scheduled to occur on December fifteenth at six thirty. And then all of that will come before this board on December twenty first with both the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and Capital Outlay Committee to meet your charter requirements of discussing the capital outlay plan before the end of the calendar year. Just want to make the board aware that I will be participating in procurement class Tuesday through Thursday of this week. This class is related to design and construction services, and it is the third class that I need to take to then go for my certification as a certified municipal procurement officer. I finished one class already. I'm in the middle of the second class, and this will be the third and final class, so I will have limited availability because I will be in remote classroom Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And then last but not least, as the board members are aware, you'll be meeting again tomorrow evening, Tuesday, December eighth at six P M. For a board meeting dedicated to all topics related to wastewater. Hopefully, all the board members got their packet on that last Friday with this evening's packet. And then, Mr. Chairman, as you know, this was born out of a discussion that you and other members have had, so we'll leave it at that. Looking forward to having a expansive discussion tomorrow evening on all matters wastewater. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Joe. Selectmen reports, Michael?
Yeah, the wastewater meeting, I I thank you and I appreciate it. I don't think we really gave the public enough time with announcements to to attend it, but I guess we'll we'll hope we'll hope that some of them watch tonight's meeting and some of them get the agenda notice. But I guess whatever we do with that meeting, we should re-televised it as much as possible.
Michael, I can interject on that, that, true, I I see that as being the the starting point. And I think we'll have multiple meetings after that, that it'll get us it'll get us going.
Okay, so two requests, Larry. First one is on tax collection. Actually, three requests, agenda items. Tax collection, where we stand. About two years ago, maybe three, there was quite a blow up about how in arrears our tax collection was. We hired an attorney. We formed a budget for that attorney to work on tax collection. It'd be nice to get an update on on where we're at on our tax collection. That's number one. Number two would be, we talked about it three weeks ago now, an update on legal. Don had brought up current counsel, and we we did bring up bringing that back and discussing who current counsel is, but but more important to me is to go open, go over open legal cases. I know that there's some pending on there that I think have been on there since I started on the board six or seven years ago now. So I would like to get an update on the legal, and if we could get prior to that meeting, that list in a Dropbox or confidential file so that we could start reviewing it before that night, that would be great. And then lastly, we all received an email from a Jeffrey Locantori, who is a disabled Harwich resident. And as far back as I can remember, Jeffrey's been lobbying to get some sort of housing built for disabled people. And on this proposal, it was specific to the Bank Street Firehouse. And and though I don't agree that it's the best use for that property, and several uses have come up since then, I do believe that either through the housing trusts or initiative of the Board of Selectmen and the Housing Committee, we own an awful lot of property in town, and the board should start to discuss as we navigate getting rid of things, whether or not that's a his proposal is a viable idea. So I'd like that to be an agenda item so we could discuss building something. And and again, his proposal was the cost to the town is a whole building or a piece of land. And and, you know, if it's a lease, we still own it. So if it doesn't work and the fundraising doesn't happen, we still own it. So I I'd like to have that conversation, and I think we owe it to him at this point to have that conversation.
Thank you, Michael. I I did respond to Jeff's email and inform him that I'd moved it on to the town administrators at this moment to dig up the the facts surrounding that so we can discuss it. So at least he knows we're we haven't just ignored his request. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Relative to what Michael said, what I would expect if we get that list of outstanding cases, it was a very unsatisfying discussion about representation because the person who represents us wasn't there. So in conjunction with the open cases, I would expect to have John Giorgio on the meeting with us so that we could actually talk with him about the status of the open cases. If it has to be executive session, we've done that before, but Michael's right, we're growing old with some of these cases. And we we probably want to have the ability to say to ourselves, is this worth us worth it to us to pursue in every instance? I remember with with First Pongo Church, it just became a money pit. And it was to no particular end. Second item is all things wastewater aren't tomorrow, and it's not on the agenda, so I'll just mention that I did get a call back from the deputy director for the Cape Town Commission relative to our eligibility to receive funds from the boost tax that's dedicated to that, that's allocated by the county level, and I got good news, and Larry's agreed to agenda that in the future. But it's it is good. We're not totally excluded for this funding round. And finally, given the holiday season, and there's definitely good news on the horizon, but it hasn't arrived yet. I just would urge everybody to be careful during this holiday season and continue be prudent about what they're doing because this thing is almost over, and you don't want to be one of those people towards the tail end of the pandemic, getting sick when when a real solution is on the horizon.
Thank you, Don. Ed?
Yeah. Sort of relating to the season of a giving that we are in and will be in for some time. It was this weekend. My pleasure is my involvement with two or community organizations to be able to stop by the with the firefighters who were at the Chamber of Commerce collecting toys and food for the Christmas season. On behalf of of the Harwich Cranberry Festival, we made a donation for the food pantry. On behalf of the Lower Cape Quanis Club, we donated a number of toys to the toy drive, and they've wrapped up their activities, but I know in the community, there will be a number of agencies that are doing similar drives and given the way a lot of people are find themselves situated this holiday season, those of us that can, I think, need to help help our less fortunate folks in town and in the Cape.
Thank you, Ed. Steve?
Nothing.
I have nothing tonight. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll take a roll call. I'll start with an aye. Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Thank you very.